Why, certainly. However, too, I would tell you the second-class code does not call for this solicitor that's sit here during the entire meeting. When I was a supervisor, I request now that they get their legal report and then they leave.
In most nights, that's what we do.
I don't think so.
Yeah, that is true.
That's not true. I mean, the solicitors, I mean, I'm not full.
We have a lot of issues that come up.
Yeah.
They wire legal advice towards the end. Maybe we can schedule it better, that's fine.
Right, that's what I'm just saying, it's not true. What was said, the solicitors are almost all in turn.
And then, as far as...
We cut on this one, it's not necessary.
The contracts, again, you know, I plan to do my best to not have our hands tied. You know, I just think it's outrageous, the salaries, the benefits, the situation that actually Alan Novak, South Coatesville Road Department, has moved into our area. That was his job, that's what he has done. So, you know, it's all a rigged government.
Can I ask a question? Who told you that we're getting rid of the police department? Like, I feel that off of a lot of you out there in the audience, like, who said that? Like, where were you persuaded that someone said that we're getting rid of the police department? Where did that ever come out of any, where did that come from? Where was that, that you showed up tonight with the impression that the police department was being dismissed?
Didn't you make comments about disbanding the police department at the last meeting yet?
No, I made, someone asked, why is an alternative to what we can do with the police?
I thought you said you made comments about contracting it out.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Ponnet, if you could come up here.
I've mentioned it twice. You've mentioned it in a public meeting about outsourcing the police department. You mentioned it.
I'm one supervisor.
You asked a question, I'm answering a question. And then the second time was, you brought it up in budget meetings. And within those minutes, then you brought it up about making a possible cut to the police. So that's how it gets out.
Yeah, but that's not how the East residents heard about it. That's how it was spoke out.
It's always been a question to not.
No, that budget, when that budget meeting happened, that's a workshop. That's when we hash things out. That's not where propaganda is spun from.
Ed, don't yell at me.
Yeah, that's not where propaganda is spun from.
Remember, you yelled at another supervisor up there.
I don't yell, I'm making sure they can hear me.
So I'm just saying.
I don't have a microphone. I'm saying that that's where, it's not to be propaganda to be put out there. Because I'm saying right now that I would not let this township not be at the same level of service or better. And that's what I said at the last meeting just as well.
And every time this comes up, you're the first person to say it. It's every single one of the meeting minutes.
Whenever single?
Anytime you cut to police service.
You're one of the departments. You're one.
And you'll just sit there and you'll say, "I don't want to make any cuts to service, I don't want to decrease any service." Well, how do you get paid for it, Ed? You gotta come up with a solution.
I do, I, yeah, I was. Justin, I was at the negotiations, you were not. I had officers say across the table to me that they got used to a certain way of living. Well, that doesn't affect everyone else here, because we all don't get used to a certain way of living. And that was the words used with me across the table by the police. And that's not how life is. Yes, yeah, you weren't at that meeting, I was.
What meeting was I at? What meeting was I at?
That. No, I'm saying you were not at the negotiations, and I was, and I was. And that's what the words were used. Why is there a certain way of living standard? Why was it even said to me? Why would someone say that to me across the table at negotiations, saying, "Well, we've gotten used to a certain way of living"? What the?
Ed, I can attest to that. But what I can attest to is that that is the sort of business that's brought up. You're the first person to say something. Not in those meetings, you said it in a budget meeting.
I did, because a budget meeting is a workshop. You have to address all the budgets. I addressed the medical.
And I understand that, but the thing is, you are sitting up there, you are the one that brings it up every single time. I'm trying to make a point, but the point is that you're the one that said in the last meeting, the last public meeting I was here, you were the one that mentioned about outsourcing this police department that's here. You did.
No, I did, I did, and I said that there's not a majority for that, but I said that's one of the alternatives that can go on here. Other municipalities have done that. They've reached out, and the reason why, Justin, and you're probably aware of it, is that it's not comparable to other municipalities. Like, what does South Coatesville Chief of Police make, Justin?
You're comparing apples to oranges.
No, I'm not. Can you not choose other chiefs and what they're paying? Can you not look at that number? Yeah, but Justin, I'm just saying, why can't you look at some of these numbers? Yeah, but Callan's a first-class township, and has a lot more.
That's comparing a Hyundai to a Mercedes. There's a difference in price, there's a difference in quality.
Oh, Valley Township, do we take that one?
South Coatesville's a borough.
I know, I know.
Well, then why you make that comparison?
No, because it's the closest one that they work with every day.
And the point is, Coatesville County, there's closer to South Coatesville.
I can, well, I don't have Coatesville City, but I have, I don't have Callan. You just pick one that's the biggest one, but I can choose Valley.
Well, you picked the worthless one, aside from the.
No, no, I use the one that they work with every day. Do you know what the strength of the police department is?
You're not making any sense, I mean, I think.
No, I am making sense, Joe. Joe, what's, what are some of the?
Ed, you just asked how people hear about outsourcing the police when you make a comment at a public meeting.
No, I didn't, no, I, someone asked. No, you're listening.
I put all my Facebook with all my drinking friends.
Although one supervisor, I have control of the board, is that what you're saying? Or do you see that, do you guys feel that, that I have control of the board?
You're supposed to take control of the meeting.
Do I have control of the board, or am I one elected supervisor?
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, Mr. Ritz, go ahead.
Yeah, we can't have people, you know, they all have a chance to come up here and speak. And everybody has spoke here tonight, and then to the vote there. And being a chairman, you're supposed to have control of the meeting. I'm not personally attacking you, Joe, but.
Well, I understand.
Didn't I tell you in reference?
Hold on, you're trying to control the meeting, buddy.
Yeah, well, you have people standing in the back yelling.
Yeah.
And personally attacking any supervisor. I'm not up here, any person talking, and it's in the bylaws, they speak to the chairman. You run the meeting, all right? It's not a personal attack against any of the other three gentlemen there. As a chairman, you run the meeting. You do not have people screaming from one side, and they all have the right to their own opinion. And just like tonight, we all realize it's 2-2, all right, so far. And it's not going to change tonight. So, to pull on this meeting just to have people yelling back and forth and taking a personal attack on any supervisor up there is out of line. I'm just saying, as a chairman, and that, and you're the chairman, you're supposed to have control of the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ritz. Anybody else like to speak?
I have a question. J K, what do we do now? We have to have a past budget balanced by December 31st. We need 20 days to advertise the budget, we are past the 20-day notice. Do we have another meeting, where are we at?
Yeah, we're not, we're not 20 days, so we need a plan before the end of the year to pass a balanced budget. That's, I think that's what's happened, whether it's here tonight or this plan going forward. I need to be available, I will be available.
Obviously, the wild card here is Mark, and we don't know his availability. I don't know. I could do next Tuesday night.
You guys agree with next Tuesday?
Yes. Yeah. You're good?
Yeah, I'm good, I mean, you need Mark.
That's the thing, is we need Mark, and we tend to only say next Tuesday night, here.
The school isn't open. And they're not even in session until the beginning of the year. The school is closed until the beginning of the year.
We're jamming attaches over here.
Or, something that can happen here is that, you know, the supervisors can work together on the budget. I mean, there's got to be places where these two are saying that, hey, there's just too much pork in this budget, and maybe they're willing to cut in some areas, not necessarily in areas that they're thinking, but maybe there's some areas that they're willing to eat in the middle ground. But there's a lot in this budget that's not being addressed, that needs to be addressed.
Well, that's the issue, is we've been doing this since August, Ed, so why, why now?
We haven't, no, we were, it was basically rushed out the last meeting. You didn't have enough votes at the last meeting for it really to be advertised. It really didn't, I mean.
Well, if you know you're a no vote, if you look at the budget, you know you're a no vote, then why don't you present something that you're going to vote yes to, instead of voting no on a budget every year? You said, you've told me that you voted no on every budget since we've both been on the board. So, why don't you find a budget you're going to vote yes to, instead of voting no all the time?
Maybe it happens in January.
Well, that's great, in 2016, we need to pass the budget by the end of the month. I mean, it's one thing to sit here and pick and complain and criticize the budget, but when you offer no alternative, and you offer nothing that's going to pass anyways, or, I mean, what's the point of that? If you want to be a dissenting vote, that's fine, but at least bring something that people can vote on. I mean, at least Mark did that, Mark brought the budget, none of us voted for it, except for him, but he brought it. I'm not, I mean, that's where I'm coming from. If you don't like this budget, again, with all due respect, I respect your opinion, I don't agree with you, but I know myself, if I wasn't going for this budget, I would have something, say, all right, well, you know what? I don't like this budget, but how about this one, or let's do this, or let's do that.
Joe, but the budget that you're voting for is just a tax. It's the easiest budget, it's so easy for me to actually do that for the residents up here. It's just a vote through a tax without, like, if I even go through some of the things in there, you probably don't even realize what's in there. You're just, it's just easy to say, "I'll tax you, and that's how I'm going to do this. And next year," because this only covers next year, "I will be back in 2017 for the 2017 budget, and I will tax you again."
It's not easy.
And then I will tax you again. It's like, that's your, that's your method to this madness. You're not addressing anything, you're very aware of that directly here. You're not really, you're looking to me like, well, I think that's a good idea, Ed, on certain things, or I think that's not. You're not really bringing anything to the table, and then we've reached this point that's not all our fault. But we've reached this point where it's just like, well, the easiest thing is just to tax everybody. Meanwhile, Coatesville School District taxes are going up, now East Fowlfield's going to have a heavy tax that's going to get even more.
It's not even a heavy tax.
It is, because you know as well as I will that in negotiations, we'll lose, there will be a 13.5% to 15% increase in pay scale in that one. We're more likely going to lose with the road department and the public works department. So you, we have all kinds of things going on here, because no one's addressing any internals here. And we're just spending like crazy. So East Fowlfield will become very expensive compared to other surrounding municipalities. We've done serious idiotic things like Go Patrol Medina for like a dollar 67 an hour in the years past.
Yeah, that was the same, that we had to control Medina for four years.
So no, I've watched, I haven't just showed up to this game. I've been in the audience like these folks since 2006. I've been watching for a long, long time, and now as a supervisor, I've been up here doing the same thing. So my stance, my campaign, everything I've done has not changed. I'm right on the mark of where I am. I've not misled anyone, I'm doing exactly what I've said in everything I do at every meeting, I think you even know that.
Yeah, I'm not saying you haven't changed. I wasn't saying that at all. But what I am saying is, if you are a no vote for this budget, I mean, what's it, what, when's the budget going to be that you vote yes for? Ever?
Sure.
Bring him to the gathering to the right. Bring him to the gathering.
Could you come up, sir, to the microphone? Thank you.
Good evening, we're the East Miss to go, I'm in the Village, also police officer here, and yes. I'm fortunate with everybody else, nobody wants to raise dices, okay? Four, eight, but I'm willing to do that, to help the police, the fire, ambulance, I'll do what I have to do, okay? All right, you guys have been up here, you say you've been up here for four years doing this stuff, you have to come up with a solution in four years. Now you're on this again, please come up with a solution. You guys are intelligent, you've been doing this for a long time, come up with a solution. It's game time. It's the night, let's do something, okay? We've been arguing about this back and forth, and it's here at the last meeting, okay? I mean, please come up with a solution. And then everybody's frustrated, and I'm not, it's tough. And I can imagine all your positions up there, and everybody's yelling and screaming at you, I can imagine, I understand that. But come up with a solution, this is your job, this is what you've decided to vote on, to do this, take that position, do something about it, please, that's all we're trying to say. Yelling and screaming, because it's not going to get anywhere anyway, and you don't want to.
Sure.
Okay, so, please come up with a solution. I mean, you guys, the other gentleman, uh, is the wire, he's not here, that's not right, you know? So, you two gentlemen, Charles, you know, please give us an idea of what you can do. Tell us what you can do to maybe help. Do this for, 2% for next year, will it help? Can you answer me that question? Will it help for 2016, bud? Will it help and give you a little extra money?
Yeah, it'll give us, it'll give us a surplus, I mean.
Okay, then you can, and if it does, which it gives you enough, you can also reduce the tax, correct? To help them.
Yeah.
But if not, you may have to do it again, which I can understand, it's going to be once, but.
Technically, it would give us a surplus. It would give us about $750,000.
Would you agree, for the one year at least, by that time, because you guys complained about all the stuff that we don't know about, why don't you fix it in 2016, bud? You've got now until next year to fix or help those problems, correct?
You, you, you think that that's what happens, but it doesn't necessarily happen that way. You, by just taxing the residents and saying, just taxing the residents and saying, well, guess what? I know this township's on a downward spiral, I'll just hit you for some more money, and maybe the board will do something about it, maybe it won't. You know, if I've been up here for four years, sounding an alarm, and nothing's happened in four years, you know why? Because you're not in the audience. No one's paying attention. Your home watching TV, mesmerized by that stuff.
You agree with that to a point?
And no one's in the audience. No, no one's at the township meetings, two to four, I mean, there is a couple of residents that are in the audience that do make the meetings regularly, but the majority of the residents don't make the meetings. You don't hear about the news, because we're not really telling you what's going on. The minutes aren't really to the extent the actual, it's just what we're required to do.
I know we're with you to that point, but the point is now we're at a, we're at a, okay? We got to do something, so.
We either have a former supervisor, or a current supervisor that's been here for six years, involved in a lot of things that have gone on in this township, showing up to possibly vote through something that he probably should vote through to pay for things that were at this point, or we have a new board supervisor coming on the board, and we get straightened out right first thing in January. I mean, that's where we're at. I, I, I understand the discomfort and the audience possibly have need, but I have really seriously not changed my stance.
It's not only you, it's just everybody, you know?
If you're at any other meeting, I'm the same way. I mean, I have been the whole time. I'm not saying that.
I worked, but I was at the last meeting, but still, it's the point, okay? Can you guys do something?
We're within a week, a week and a half of a new supervisor being on the board, or one showing up that's been here for six years, that's well aware of how this township's spent.
You should have been here now, so that's the problem.
I know, I showed up, I was here since 5:15.
I know.
So I sit here and just remind myself a lot.
That's all I have for you guys, can you do something, you know?
The one thing, Ed, I'm just not sure if you're saying that we're just going to wait till January, because we have to do take some action.
Yeah, don't you have to have it passed by the end of the year? December 31st. We have that balanced budget, we have that balanced budget, yes. Right, so you can't wait till January? There's no way you can. You know, you said no, no way humanly possible. A and D are my choices, I don't have a C. Just make the choice. Get it right, you can change it in January. You can fix it then, you got a whole year to fix it. Work hard, that's, we don't have to argue about this anymore. Passes then, get it straight, and move forward. Digging up everything from the past, that finds the problem. What's the answer? What's the fix? Time cards, this, that, the other thing. Hey, I don't pay them with taxes either. But if it gets me straightened out, gets us straightened out, the roads fixed, the police force take care of, the fire company, I'm okay with it. It's a little extra dirt on my body, and I'm cool with that. But to sit here and say, "I can't do it," because, why? Because you're not going to be able to fix it in January? You have four years to fix it. And I'm not, not just you, I'm the board in general.
Just one vote.
I understand, that's what I'm saying, it's not just you. We have one guy who voted yes last time, now he's saying he can't do it humanly, oh, you can. Humanly, open your mouth, say yes, be done with it, fix it later, and fix all the problems. I'm down with that, fix them all. Call everybody out, put their name on the paper, do what you got to do, brother.
Paper doesn't refer, this is the first time paper's been here a long time.
We have a. Whatever, if it's the first time, make sure it's not the damn last time, okay? I'm with you, but let's make this thing happen. Move forward, looking back is only the rearview mirror. Looking forward is where we got to go. Simple as that, anymore.
Mr. Scott.
What is the figure that is putting us into a real estate debt? So that we cannot, and what is the figure amount that we would have to delete from this budget to make it balance? Give me that figure.
How do you want to comment on that?
I mean, if balance doesn't, now, I'm sorry, I appreciate it.
What is, oh, we're in deficit?
Yes.
Hello, then why was not this budgeted last year? Somewhere, we have over expended.
One of it was a workers' compensation audit. We had underestimated how much salary was being paid out, so that was a $12,000 assessment that we received. Our medical compensation insurance is still up.
Okay, but again, what I would need to know is, what is the figure amount that we would need to minus out of the current?
350,000.
350,000, how did we get to that point? You, the ones that are trying to push it through, have not been tending store. So now, now you come and you say, "Oh, we weren't tending store, we weren't watching our Ps and Qs throughout the year, and now we're at 350,000 in the red. So, well, well, let's just tax the people." No, I say, stay your ground eyes, do not vote for this budget. I'm not going to pay for your inefficient in-. No, you cut that budget back where you have not been tending store and watching. And, I don't care that you are at a contracted service, I'm going to communicate with the labor racketeering program of the Department of Justice, because I feel that's what's going on. And, you all been notified, I've been here before, and I've addressed, and I've been put down, and one time, a mentor put the police in my face and told me that they would put me out. You were on the board then, and so was.
I was not on the board for a mentor, no, but that's not part of this.
And I know a lot of people who come up to me and said how wrong that was. But you boys, you ones that are trying to push it through, have not been watching store. So, I don't care, but.
There are plenty of cuts that have been going on, yes, there can be more, Ed's been pushing some, and we got medical through, that was a savings. But certain things went up, when you, we had issues where things were under budgeted, as Ponnet said in past years, that for whatever reason, they were under budgeted, and now we're getting hit with a bigger fee. The increase in liability insurance, workers' comp insurance, medical insurance, these are all things that are going up.
We've come in here, you have all these people come in, and we spend all kinds of money to analyze everything, et cetera, et cetera. Alone, I'm not buying a thing. I cannot afford a real estate tax. And, believe me, the school district, which is also run by Alan Novak, and you can laugh what you want, because you're laughing because you're ignorant.
Thank you.
You're ignorant of the facts.
What I have a problem with, and I'll say it again, it's like, you really, no one cares more about you than you most of the time, and you really should care about what this government's doing, because your professional agencies aren't picking up on things. I mean, look, look at what happened with Westwood Fire Department with that $300,000. That's over a time span of five years of money disappearing out of the fire department, allegedly theft it. I mean, even in this township, I mean, the park and rec fund with the fee in lieu of money has been under, being looked at, because, I mean, we even had a forensic accountant at one time that was on the board, and he was looking at it, and there's so much errors, and these professional auditors are not picking up on it. They didn't pick up on it for Westwood, it couldn't have gone that long if the professional auditor was really looking at things. Some things should have balanced out, and it's the same thing for East Fowlfield. The residents here, you really need to make the meeting to start paying attention, possibly run for supervisor yourself. It's just that we're at a higher level here, again, I've been making the meetings for a long time, and I just feel like with how, what the position I am, I will not vote through the tax at this time if there's not any cuts looked at. I just think there's too much in the budget.
Well, I'll just say, kind of reiterating what I said earlier, you know, again, this is more or less, passing the budget is a legal requirement to allow us to function, to be able to pay our employees, to be able to pay for the roads and all that. It's not something that we have to stick hardcore to and spend exactly what it says in each category. We can easily go across it over the next year, as I said, I'm willing to meet every week and go over the budget line by line, see where we can save, and make next year a better year, where we can lower the mileage. But at this point, and to correct something from earlier, you know, the military proposing covers our deficit and gives us a surplus, and allows us to hire a township manager, which is where the day-to-day stuff gets covered. That's what most townships do in this county and in the state, they have a township manager, unless, you know, their supervisors are full-time supervisors, which is not the case in Chester County. So, you know, we need something to go by to at least have a figure, to have a set of numbers that says, okay, we have a budget. It's just like the budget at home, just because you have it doesn't mean you have to spend it. I'm not all for spending all of it, if we can find areas to save, we can find areas to save, and that budget number becomes an actual number of zero, or it becomes an actual number of less at the end of next year. You know, this is simply, in my mind, something to move forward, to allow us to function. And yes, I agree, Ed, wholeheartedly, we need to look at everything, okay? You know, maybe we as a board have not done as good a job of that, but we need to do so moving forward. We're all at that point now where we, you know, maybe, you know, everyone's on board, and we realize these issues, and we know what that is. You know, again, we have, you know, only $300,000 in the rainy gate fund, and that's going to go nowhere if we don't function, if we don't have a budget in place, which is simply a guideline, not hardcore numbers, okay? And, and in my view, to say that, you know, we're going to sit here next year and tell them we need to raise it another two mils is a very pessimistic view. We, I know that the police are willing to work with us, and that we can get a contract with them that is fair and reasonable to them and to us. I wholeheartedly believe that. I've talked with the officers, Joe and I have, with the DA, and we're all in agreement, saying, you know, we, everybody understands where we're at, we can reach an agreement there. You know, and at some point, we're going to have to reach an agreement with the road crew, that's fair and equitable to everybody there as well, okay? See, that's where we're going.
Stop, you, I mean, the email that you just sent out about, like, you know, someone needs to look up the word negotiations, I mean, we're, I mean, it's not all going the way you're saying, I mean, you realize that too, it doesn't just necessarily go that way.
Well, correct.
It's collective work.
Yeah, it's collective work, and we got to work together. I mean, I wasn't on the last police contract, so I don't know, all I hear is hearsay, so I can't, I'm not going to say things I've heard about the last negotiation, or what happened from both sides of the table.
Right, I don't believe.
But, you know, I, I don't have a wholehearted pessimistic view that we can't work with these people and get to an agreement. Yes, the Teamsters negotiation is not going as well as we would have liked, but, you know, that's going to get, that's going to pass at some point too. As I said, I know we can work with the police, we've already talked to them about what's possible for next year, and where we can find some savings, and what is good for them. You know, I mean, we will get to a spot where it's fair for everybody, okay? Will it be great? No, but will it work? Yes. And that's where we need to be, in a spot where we can actually work and function. So, I mean, passing the budget, again, is a guideline. It's not a hard, fast rule that we have to spend it because it's in there. I mean, I don't know what else we're going to do, I mean, I don't see where you can cut 350,000 and make up the deficit that we have. And then, you know, we have, you know, people talk about the roads, you know, a roadmaster's telling us we need to spend $500,000 to $600,000 a year on roads. We know Mortonville's going to be a million plus. You know, I mean, where are we going to get that money without, you know, taking out a loan, or, you know, in this case, the mileage? And we, yeah, we'll be able to kill them with the financial situation we're in, with being in a deficit. So we need to do something, again, it's not great, it's not perfect, it's not optimal, but it's something that gets us through and allows us to function as a government. And as I said, you know, the third or fourth time now, I'm willing, as I'm sure Joe is, and I don't want to speak for him, but I'll meet every week and go through this budget. If you want to go through it line by line and analyze it, see where we can save, I am all for that. But we need to have the budget in place so we can function and make next year better, so that we're not sitting here again next year saying, "Well, what do we do?" And that's what happened to us where we are. Okay, yes, things have happened in the past that aren't great. Why can't we just move forward? Again, it's not a great situation, but it's a workable one, to at least get us through next year, which isn't great, because my plan, you know, would be to have more of a five- to 10-year plan as far as where our money's coming from, where we're going to spend it for the roads and all that. These are all things that are accomplishable if we just move forward and work together with everyone. So, you know, for me, passing this budget, you know, is a necessity, so that we're not here, you know, December 31st trying to vote, we're back in November, where we're tearing apart the budget again and coming up with something that may or may not work, and that we may end up going over because of, you know, increase in costs, unexpected costs that we saw this year, that hopefully will get better and we can better account for them.